Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and we'd like to open the Citrus Heights Planning Commission meeting of February eighth, twenty twenty-three. It is promptly six P M. And we'll call this meeting to order. And let's see, Chair Van Duker, would you like to lead us in the pledge tonight? Hey, all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And may we have the first item, please.
Roll call, and that would be Commissioner Price.
Present.
Commissioner Remick.
Present.
Commissioner Sheeler.
Present.
Commissioner Shiminico.
Here, present.
Commissioner Shish.
Here.
Thank you, Shishko, Vice Chair Van Duker.
Here.
Chair Flowers.
Present.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar approval of minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, having had just, I believe, three of us who were here for the last meeting, have you all had a chance to review any amendments or changes? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
All right, and the three of us in favor, I guess, that's how that works? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Unanimously moved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Public comment. Under Government Code five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any, any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak will be, wishing to speak for an agenda item or against an agenda item will be called upon at the presentation of the City Planning Division and the applicant for that agenda item.
Okay, and are there any speaker or non-agenda items? I believe we just had a gentleman come in. Okay, very good. Okay, and I believe we do have one item, and I believe we have a written one as well, correct?
Yeah, open the public comment.
Okay. Open public comment, and Mr. Valdez, would you please approach and state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City and Planning Commission members. My name is Carlos Valdez. I am a field representative for Carpenter's Local Union forty-six, and I'm here to talk about the importance of having every standard wages and benefits in every one of the projects that we have in the city. You may, as you said, what's every standard wages and benefits and what it stands for. It stands for healthcare, apprenticeship, and every standard wages, you know, themselves. When it comes to healthcare, do you know that nearly fifty percent of construction workers rely on some form of public assistance? Also, one out of four construction workers in California like health insurance, which is two and a half times the rate of California workers, of all California workers. When it comes to apprenticeship program, the construction apprenticeship programs are a proven escalator to the middle class, training tens of thousands of Californians every year and no cost to taxpayers, and because of increased wages and lack of student debt, construction apprenticeship can be a better option than a traditional undergraduate program for many of our young people. Why do we need the every standard wages? I think that we need this, every standard wages so we can give, it will allow the workers and their families to live in the communities that they work in. It's also means this, those wages and will go back into our community. As they spend their earnings locally and their tax dollars will help, will help funding our local schools and governments. It will be very important for all of our projects to be having a responsible contractor that abides, that has a joint apprenticeship program that will give our youth a chance to pursue a career, in this case, as a construction worker, as a carpenter. And, you know, there's not, not everybody has a chance to go to college. Some people will like to go to the other four-year apprenticeship program, I mean, the other four, the other four-year program, and I think that we need to have language on every one of our projects that we need to implement these specifics so we can have a better community, you know, self-sustained community, and a community that doesn't depend on public services, and that will be it.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe we also have a written non-agenda item as well?
We do. Hello, City of Citrus Heights Planning Commission. My name is Mary Jo Beneki. I have an unusual predicament regarding the sale of my property at seventy-seven-seventy Nelson Lane. I spent my childhood years and teen years living on Nelson Lane. Nelson Lane is a private dead-end street hidden in Citrus Heights. The neighbors are friendly and helpful. Many of the neighbors have animals or bees. The environment is quiet and peaceful. If no one was to visit Nelson Lane, one would say it's a rural residential area. The road is dirt, and it is maintained by the neighbor, neighbors, and has been in Citrus Heights since nineteen-eleven. About eleven years ago, my parents passed on, but I continued to save a small portion of Nelson Lane, keeping the lot beside their home, seventy-seven-seventy Nelson Lane. I'm writing you because I'm in the process of selling the property, and I'm discovering that it's a complicated scenario. I'm selling the vacant, I'm selling, excuse me, the land I'm selling is a vacant point-eight-three acre lot with an older shed zoned R D two on a dirt, private dirt slash gravel lane. There's no house on the property. I think it's the first truly vacant property to go up for sale on Nelson Lane. Here is where the predicament arises. Because my property is zoned R D two on a private road, when a buyer builds a home on the property, the fire department would require paving the entire road. If the property was zoned agricultural or agricultural residential, on a, a non-paved road would be acceptable. The caveat is, the City of Citrus Heights does not have agricultural zones. I think it's time, I think at the time the city comes, sorry, I think at the time of the city's conception, R D one and R D two took the qualities of Sac County's agricultural zones, therefore dropped the agricultural zones altogether. I have been in communication with Fire Inspector Rebecca Landy to find a workaround to avoid paving all of Nelson Lane at the cost of around fifty-five thousand dollars. She and her supervising inspector Diana Schmidt have been so helpful in assisting me in learning about this property, but they have confirmed that if a new development does happen to go in, SAC Metro Fire would require roads to be made of all-weather driving material. The exception of this prop, the only exception of this is the property zoned A or A R zoning. My last email with Rebecca, she did attach ordinance of the City of Citrus Heights amending chapter thirty-eight of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to fire prevention and protection. Section two oh-two of the Citrus Heights amending chapter, general definitions, all-weather driving surfaces added as follows: A roadway with minimum surface, surface finish of one layer of asphalt or concrete that is designed to carry the imposed weight loads of fire apparatus. The exception, R D three occupancies located on agricultural or agricultural residentially-zoned lots. I'm asking for your help. I know the Planning Commission might have some insight on what I'm missing. The general plan acknowledges the importance of preserving our islands of rural living and acknowledges that these rural areas might not meet new standards. Could you offer me any advice? Has this type of situation happened in Citrus Heights before? I have attached a photo of seventy-seven-seventy Nelson Lane and the amending chapter. I really appreciate your time and response.
Thank you. Very good. Is there any other public comments? Okay, I'll close the public comment. I do have a request to add an agenda item here and actually just move it from the regular calendar A, and so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the amend it to the agenda. Entertain that motion. Yes, I'll just make it.
I second that amend, the motion.
Okay, was that first?
All right.
You want to first it for me? Thank you, Max. Okay, so a, a motion was made by Commissioner Shishko and a second by Van Duker. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so we can go ahead and move the item six A into place now. Allison.
Thank you, Commission, for making that agenda movement. I think my presentation will kind of give you a lead-in to the next item, which is a zoning code update. Since they're somewhat related, I think this will help. So, thank you for making that change. I am Allison with the City of Citrus Heights Planning Division, and I have the item for you tonight, and we're just going to go over some newly adopted housing laws that started in January of this year, and it's, a few do start in July, but it's just an overview presentation. You're certainly not going to leave here understanding any of these laws, and I don't expect you to, because I'm still trying to figure them out myself, but it's really just an overview of a few of the key items that relate to projects you may or may not see coming to Citrus Heights. So, in twenty twenty-three, the, what the continued housing crisis that the state has faced for a number of years, they can, the legislature continued to adopt new housing laws. Actually, forty-one of them were signed into law. We're going to go over about six or seven of those forty-one. Most of them, as I mentioned, do, did take effect January of this year, and the scope of these laws are very wide-ranging, some pertaining directly to housing and some housing-related. So, the variety of themes on the presentation, housing, talking about housing in non-residential or what we call commercial zones, some new legislation relating to that, accessory dwellings, those are your secondary dwelling, your granny flats that are built on properties. This, those laws have pretty much changed every year since about two thousand seventeen. Streamlining, there's some permit streamlining activities. We're going to talk about density changes, some parking reforms, probably the one that you hear the most about, has been on the news quite a bit, and then some of our reporting requirements that are changing. First one is A B twenty-eleven, and its partner is S B six, which I'll talk about on the next slide. They're very similar legislation. They're related to constructing or entitling housing projects in non-residential areas, so commercial areas. The intent of these is to streamline, put some concessions for the developers if they're going to encourage or add housing into these zones if they meet certain conditions. So, the first one, A B twenty-eleven, talks about prevailing wage. So, if the developer agrees to build the project using prevailing wage, and it's a hundred percent affordable project, which means the rents or the housing purchase sales are sold to someone of restricted income, then they get some of these, these concessions. And some of those concessions are, they can meet the density, or they can actually exceed the density, and the density is the number of units that are typically allowed in that zoning district. So, a traditional subdivision, you're going to have a density of what we call R D five, it's going to be five units per acre. Commercial zones are forty units per acre, so this means if they agree to this, they could build at least forty units per acre or more. There are some objective standards, which we'll talk about also, that they'll have to meet, and then there's a short timeframe that we have to work with the developer, so the project doesn't, it moves quicker through the process. So, we have a lot of restrictions if somebody submitted a project under A B twenty-eleven. This one, due to its complexity, this is one that doesn't start until July first, and probably are not going to see a project here in Citrus Heights under A B twenty-eleven. We could under S B six, but I just wanted you to be aware of the type of things that are coming down through the state legislature that we're working with. This is the S B six, which is very similar, except it does not have that affordable requirement. The other one did have the income restrictions for the properties built. This one does not have that requirement. It does have a little bit of different change on the wage. It does have prevailing wage, and it does require this highly skilled and trained workforce, which typically would be your union workers and those that are receiving union wages and having health benefits. This again allows this density change or to meet or exceed the density allowance, and this one starts in July of this year. It did have a sunset date, which means it will end in twenty thirty-three, and so typically before that time, the legislature would decide, has it been successful? They could extend it, or it could just go away in twenty thirty-three. And as far as streamlining, and this is the time that we're allowed by law to process an application, we have guidelines in planning law that say in application, we must do certain things in cer, in a certain number of days. So, this does extend that to beyond entitlement stage. So, before us, we, our projects, you're reviewing entitlements, your use permits, your design review permits. Then, once they complete planning, then they go to the building permit stage. They may go the engineering division for grading permits, demolition permits, things like that. The Streamlining Act has been extended to those processes as well, so now they also have a time clock put on them to do certain things. They also do require that application status be available to the public on the website or through some electronic software. They also require us to have available to the public our requirements for processing those applications, what they must submit. And I can say that the city, we currently meet many of these requirements already. I know for sure the building department does. They have a ten-day turnaround for building permits, so they're rather quickly, but really, this is to give you an idea of the type of legislation that's coming down that we're having to work under. And these are all items that we're told to do, and there's no money that comes along with them, so we're figuring that out. The city is embarking on a new permitting system. That's actually a citywide enterprise system, which was great timing because it will help us meet these deadlines. This is the, probably the biggest, most shocking one. It's parking reform, A B twenty-ninety-seven, and it really eliminates the need, that eliminates that we can require parking for projects. Now, these could be residential projects or commercial projects. The caveat is, it's all development within a half a mile of what they're calling a major transit stop, and these could be transit stops that are either existing or even planned in some transportation plan. So, I'll show you in a map in a second how this impacts us. So, what basically said if, if you are building a project, it could be a housing project, it could be a, a new Starbucks, it could be whatever retailer might be, you're not required to provide parking. We can't require you to provide parking. Now, in the common world, I think we would realize that nobody would do that in our suburban environment, because I don't think anyone would visit a retailer that they couldn't park at. So, we're kind of dependent on the development community to be thoughtful about this, when they're going to apply this measure or use the A B twenty-ninety-seven. Hopefully, they will have some common sense, and I think they will. But just to let you know that that could be coming through. If you see projects come through and you think there's not enough parking, it could be related to A B twenty-ninety-seven. So, how that applies here is we work with S A C O G, which is our local council of governments, on transportation plans. So, they did a map for us that shows existing transit stops that qualify under this legislation, as well as some that are planned, which also then would be within this half-mile buffer. So, as you can see by this map here, this, the red are the stops, and the blue is this half-mile buffer. That's really everything on Sunrise Boulevard. So, from our city, both city limits to the north and to the south, if the project within half a mile of Sunrise Boulevard, there's no parking requirements, and yes, that does include Sunrise Mall. State density bonus law has also been amended. This is another one that's pretty well amended every year. Density bonus law is the provisions where a developer, again, is given concessions if they're going to provide affordable housing as part of their project. So, in general terms, if you're going to have a development on ten acres and density would allow you to build a hundred units, if you apply state density bonus, because you're going to restrict a certain percentage of those units to a variety of income levels, then you can build more units than typically would be allowed. You could have a taller building, you have increased height allowances, you have parking waivers, you have setback waivers. So, there's all kinds of concessions that are provided to developers should they commit to the housing units being for restricted incomes. So, that, this law was again updated with this. They included a variety of new concessions, as well as added some new descriptions of type of projects that would qualify. And then, I think the biggest one of this one is the additional concessions come if you have a hundred percent low-market rate, they call it, so an affordable project, all units are affordable, then you get even extra concessions. And accessory dwelling units, kind of touched on that. They do amend this every year. This legislation, though, really has been the most successful change that the, I have seen. Two thousand seventeen, they started messing with accessory dwelling units. A lot of cities or jurisdictions had hurdles in order for you to have an accessory unit on your property. They required use permit, they required you to live there, they required it to be a relative and so forth, and each year, the state has amended that and taken away these different restrictions. For us, we were already on that path. We had already removed many of those restrictions, but each year, they have amended it. It's made a little bit better. They have reduced the setbacks, they've increased the heights this year. So, we continue to be successful in our accessory dwelling unit. I believe this past year, thirty-two, we had thirty-two accessory dwelling units, and up to about two thousand seventeen, we had five since we were a city. So, I mean, it has been a successful program. On these, I guess the one thing to mention is the height limit that they did increase this round before it was restricted, restricted to sixteen feet for the accessory dwelling unit. They did increase that to eighteen, and then they also put the caveat, then an additional two feet for your roof pitch. So, essentially, these units can be twenty feet tall. Every year, we do, we have to do an annual progress report to the state on the implementation of our general plan. You will see, the annual progress report will come to you for review, and that will be in March, as it's due to the state April first. So, it'll go to you for review, and then also go to the city council. But just so you know, when you get that report, you might see some different information in there based upon a number of these laws that are presented here of more housing-related topics that we have to report. So, basically, we have a lot. So, we're, have compounded a lot of these laws. We have put them into the zoning code where necessary, we're adopting our processing plans as necessary to be compliant. So, one reason I had this move before the next item on the zoning code, as you go through those updates, as Eric goes through them, you'll notice some of the topics and the trends, and they're, and you'll know why they're there. They're related back to some of this legislation. But a couple of things I want to talk about, because it will be coming to you a little bit further down the road related to these laws. One is this objective standard requirement. The Housing Accountability Act has called out objective standards for a number of years, but the legislature now is using that standard quite often, and it is requiring the cities to have these standards in place, and what they are, they're called objective because they're very specific on if you want to build a project, and I'm talking about housing specifically, that this is what it needs to do. Before, we'd have to say, you know, it may, it must blend in with the community. It must have different things, very subjective, feel-good type requirements. Now, they're wanting very specific, it must be thirty feet tall, it must change planes or elevations at ten feet. So, very specific standards, and so we are working on those. You will see those coming before you for review and adoption, probably April, May. The first area will be Auburn Boulevard. We have a, what we call a retail-to-rooftops program, and that's a way to introduce housing onto the Boulevard through a number of measures and a guide, and then they will have very detailed objective standards to help the, bring housing onto the Boulevard and get rid of, kind of reuse some of those vacant dead space that we have there. So, it'll be helpful when people are considering a project, we're going to have hopefully an adopted program, and then we will expand that to, for objective standards citywide. So, in other commercial areas in the city that are vacant and want to be reused for housing, we'll have objective standards for that, too. So, you will be seeing that coming in the future, the summer. Housing in the commercial zone, some of those laws you, you heard do require us to allow housing in the commercial zone. We have already done that, that we took that action in our general plan a couple of years ago, so we are already on that path. This density requirement, though, where we have to allow a certain density in those, in those plans, we're working on that, and that will be coming down the road, too. Then, these projects with these income restrictions units to get the shorter path to approval and increased densities, that is coming. We've been working on an affordable program that will help guide the development of those units, and that will be going to the city council next month, because it's a program guide, so they'll, it'll be in their area purview to review that program, so we have been working on that as well. And then, the zoning code updates, which Eric is going to present to you here shortly, and then, as I mentioned, the city does, is acquiring a new permitting software system that will help us stay in compliance with that other legislation on public information and being able to check online the status of your permit and so forth. So, a lot going on, but I know that's, you're really excited to hear all that information. But if you have any questions, happy to answer them. If not, I will turn it over to Eric.
Thank you, Allison, for the presentation. That is a lot. Fire hose, and I'm so glad you guys are at the helm, I'll tell you. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Sheeler?
I suspect that maybe you've covered the ground before, but what is the definition of affordable or restricted income?
It varies. It's a definition that's set by HUD, Housing, Urban and Community Development, and then they look at median incomes for your area and determine a family of four. I think the median income is identified as eighty-one thousand dollars, and so that may be median income. So, low income is eighty percent of that, lower income is sixty percent of that. So, it, it does range.
I'm curious, because so often, relative to the homeless issue, we hear about the need for more affordable income, and when I look at some of the, the poor souls that are on the streets, and I ask myself, what would be affordable to them? I, I can't see other than basically giving them a unit to live in. I can't see, I only see that that's the only affordable that they can afford. And so, I, that's why I asked a question, trying to understand who, who would fit into, quote, the affordable category?
It was, it could vary. I mean, traditionally, affordable, medium affordable is, you know, your, your city workers, your teachers, your everyday workers really fit in the affordable. It's when you get into the low, very low, and extremely low, I think is what you're speaking of, but there are those ranges, too. And then you have some that have no income.
Right.
Right? And so, those housing units would be funded through some other source, obviously.
I, I just think it's, it's important to, not, not so much you, but it's important to me that I think that issue gets fleshed out, because so often, the word just affordable gets tossed around relative to the homeless. gets tossed around relative to the homeless issue. And when you really look at projects and the state trying to push more, quote, "affordable" housing, it doesn't sound like necessarily that that is really going to address the homeless issue, really. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just stating it as an observation.
It is a confusing topic and that word gets used to cover many, many types of income levels.
Okay. Thank you.
Allison, I have a, I have a question and then I actually am going to ask for just a little clarification. So one of the questions is pertaining to the prevailing wage requirement on some of these low income or affordable housing.
Contradictory, is it?
It is. I'm very familiar with prevailing wage and I understand what it does to the local contractor and what it requires of the local contractor to build these affordable housing. So has there been any questions around that or any discussion around that topic at all to make sense of that?
Discussion, I'm not sure, except that's the way the law, the legislation was presented and passed. I think what's unique about this year is both SB 6 and the 2011 are very similar. And usually they would merge and have one legislation, but they kept them separate and had to do with those wages. One required the union wages with medical insurance and all that versus just the prevailing wage.
Very interesting. The, the second matter would be an example of the AB 6. So is that, if we have an open retail space, say for example on Sunrise, you know, on Sunrise Boulevard, which I know we have some spaces right now that are quite large, that are finding it very challenging to put a suitable retail unit in there, would that allow the consideration of residential in that area?
That's correct.
Okay. I actually am really in support of that. I think it's great.
Yeah, I mean I say the city, you know, we were too, we saw, I mean it didn't take much to see that that was coming, we had a lot of empty space. So we were kind of, we were ahead of the curb on that. We had already changed our documents and our plans to allow commercial, to allow residential in the commercial zone, but now it's being legislated, but even more so than what I'd already allowed.
No, fantastic, thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, Allison, thank you very much for your presentation and we'll move on to the next item.
Public hearing, item 5A, zoning code update. Staff proposes to modify a section of the zoning code to reflect changes in state law as well as make necessary refinements, including changes to affordable housing incentives, parking requirements, accessory dwelling units, regulations and temporary uses. The amendments are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section 15061B3 of the guidelines that adopt the proposed ordinance will not result impacts in physical environment. Project planner, Eric Singer.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Allison, for taking the brunt of the heavy lifting tonight. I will try to keep this as simple as possible. A lot of what I'll be presenting is somewhat repeating what Allison has already covered, but I'll be talking a little bit more about maybe specific implementation into the zoning code. So just broadly speaking, you know, the general plan and the zoning code are the two guiding documents for how the city wants development to occur. The general plan is like the Constitution. It has very broad overarching goals, policies, actions that the city is directed to undertake to achieve certain development patterns. And the zoning code is essentially a portion of its book of laws that is, in essence, intended to implement the goals, policies and actions that are outlined in the general plan. So the zoning code will specify things like the allowable intensity of land use, so the number of dwelling units per acre that could be built, or the types of uses that can be built in a certain area. Use permit is required to build something or to have a particular use in an area. It also has regulations around things like landscaping, preservation of our tree canopy, what type of sign you can put on your building, how many parking spaces are required, right? It does get very granular about how the city wants development to occur. So we try to update it every year, usually a couple of times a year, you'll see changes that are coming down the pike related to the state laws that Allison briefed you on. Additionally, we do make a lot of changes in response to community input and feedback. Residents will tell us, this particular section is super difficult to parse, I couldn't quite understand this, this seems to contradict this. Every time we come across that, we try to include it in the next round of zoning code updates so that it's a little bit easier to decipher because lord knows, no average Joe wants to have to spend the better part of a Saturday night having to parse through the zoning code. So in this go around, the amendments to the zoning code included, like Allison was discussing, changes to affordable housing incentives, parking requirements, accessory dwelling units. One of the issues that she did not touch on has to do with a law that was passed in regards to temporary vending in the public right-of-way, so I'll go a little bit more in depth on that. First off, specifying one of the components of AB 2334 that Allison talked about, specifically the incentives that can be given to any development that's proposed within a low VMT area, that includes unlimited density for any development proposal, as well as specifically a 33-foot height increase. That language had to be introduced and codified in the zoning code, so that's in there. The parking requirement, the bell of the ball, so to speak. So again, just looking at how it's not allowed to be required for any development within a half mile of public transit. And as part of the zoning code update, we needed to include a definition of public transit, so that's why that was included in the chapter eight, talking about definitions. This again is just that map, looking at what is going to be considered part of that high-quality transit corridor. Again, that can change over time, but that will be something that SECOG and the, you know, local community of governments will be obviously advising us of as changes potentially occur. Again, the accessory dwelling unit changes, including height increases. We basically took all of the individual language, the bullet points that the state law talked about, 16 feet in single-family, 18 foot, feet in multi-family, but if it's detached at this and that, we tried to make it as simple as possible to say, regardless of zone, your new height limit for an ADU is 18 feet plus an additional two feet to allow for roof pitch alignment with any existing structures on site. Second part of that was, front yard setbacks are not allowed to be imposed if it's going to prevent construction of an ADU that's at least 800 square feet in size. Now that means basically, if you've got a unique lot that does not physically have the room in the backyard to construct an ADU, the only place to build it on the property is by encroaching into your front yard setback, the city is not allowed to impose a front yard setback, as long as it's meeting that four-foot side and rear setback and the ADU can be up to 800 square feet in size. Last but not least, one of the bigger changes is just having to do with temporary vending. So SB 946 was passed. One of the kind of key components was talking about not being able to impose, it's essentially about having objective standards for restrictions on temporary vendors that are operating within a right-of-way. Now, this is specifically talking about sidewalk vendors. So this is food vendors, you know, mobile merchandise carts, you know, you'll, you'll see mobile farming carts, things of that nature that'll post up on a, on a corner. For temporary vending on private property, there is a time limit that the city is keeping in place of 180 days per calendar year. That time limit is just being clarified to not apply to temporary vendors that are operating in the right-of-way. So these are the recommended motions that staff has for you, essentially to recommend to the city council to pass an ordinance to adopt these zoning code changes. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and that'll do it.
Thank you, Eric. And do any of the commissioners have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Shear.
Sorry. I had this discussion with Allison Bermudas concerning the ADUs and not having control of setbacks in the front yard such that, you know, if you don't have a backyard, you could put a 800 square foot ADU in the front yard, which I find frankly appalling. I just think people need to, I said this to Allison and I think you both did a very good job, I think people need to understand that these are state mandated regulations. This is not the city doing this, this is the state mandating this, not only in citrus heights, but across the, across the country, I mean across the state rather. So I, I just feel, of course, it would just decimate neighborhoods should this happen and as Allison points out, that, you know, most homeowners wouldn't want that in their front yard, but I said, well, what if you have a rental, a rental unit? And they just decided they wanted more rent, they could stick one in their front yard. So I, you know, I understand that these are state mandated and I think it's, it's not, I don't, I don't find them very palatable, but I understand our requirements.
It is completely understandable. One of the things that Allison and I pride ourselves on is, is the discussions that we have with people that are inquiring about accessory dwelling units on public counter or over the phone. Typically, we try our best, even though we're not allowed by law to impose subjective design standards, like, oh, it has to be in keeping with the community character, it does help sometimes to just have common sense conversations with homeowners about these things, even if somebody's looking to rent out their unit. Realistically, you're going to get more rent for something that looks nice than something that doesn't. So, you know, it's kind of putting planners on the front lines once again to, to take on some of the things that might arise as a result of these new laws, but we're, we're there to meet the challenge, so.
Any other questions? Eric, actually I did just, was curious, more than anything, can you elaborate a little bit on the sidewalk vendors? So is this, is this lifting any restrictions on them whatsoever in terms of time so they could park 365?
So again, the, the law states that you need to have objective standards for regulations regarding sidewalk vending. This specific provision within the zoning code that didn't seem to jibe with the attorney that we referred to was not having a, a days per calendar year time limit in effect. However, if there are other laws in effect that might regulate hours of operation so that there's not any potential noise or nuisance, you know, problems as a result of a sidewalk vendor, those are fully, you know, capable of being enforced. I think it's more so just taking out the specific language about days of the calendar year that could not particularly be imposed on sidewalk vendors.
Is, is there a limit, and I'm just asking because I, I wasn't even aware that we had this in place. So, you know, I've always wondered how our little local vendors that are setting up here and there and popping up, we're doing that, but is there a limit to the amount of street vendors in a particular area or is there a zoning code for that right now that I'm?
So technically, no. I mean temporary vending is, I mean essentially every temporary vendor has to apply for a temporary use permit. And that is a process where, you know, you're applying through the planning department, you're submitting an application, you're saying where exactly you're going to be operating, generally speaking, your hours of operation, your operating characteristics, number of employees, if bathrooms are available. Many of those things have to meet county environmental management standards, essentially, health codes and things of that nature. So in terms of the number of vendors, no. But, I mean, I think it's safe to say that we have not historically seen a vast number of these pop up on street corners. It's more so the mobile merchandise stands that you'll see pop up, the fruit vendors, they tend to try to go to high-traffic areas, so the corners of the mall property or along Sunrise and Greenback. Again, just anecdotally speaking, in my almost five years here, I have not seen a ton of those come through. Tends to be a good mix of food trucks, of people that are trying to, you know, hawk their wares at a local farmer's market and so they'll try to be a part of a larger temporary use permit that was issued for an event like that or a recurring community event. So, not sure if that answers the question, but.
Yeah, it does, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
All right, so take, for instance, there's a honey vendor across the street from Walmart, perpetually there, and sells great honey. I'm assuming she doesn't own any property, it seems to be in the public, in the public way. If, so this restriction says that a transient vendor can come into our city and sell unrestricted, basically, as long as they pick up whatever type of business permit they may need. But a property owner that may have a similar high traffic, traffic type area cannot do it and they're restricted to 180 days? Why, why would we be punishing property owners in our city that would have a legitimate, maybe use of a property that, I mean, you're not going to do it in a normal neighborhood, but there are some like properties with the overlays and these types of things, or adjacent to commercial overlays where they're residential houses and, and you could see this being pretty easy to, for an individual to say, well, I want to sell some honey, or they've got bees in their backyard. And those property owners are going to get harassed more than a transient person coming into our city.
So is the question essentially, why are we still applying the time limit to vendors in the, on the private properties?
Your expertise on the subject or your knowledge of the subject, how did the legislature come up with that? I mean, it doesn't make, it makes no sense to, I mean, all of a sudden, we've got citizens of this city paying all the taxes, they're getting less opportunity to do something that would have to make sense for their property, but somebody can just come rolling in and they don't have nothing to do with our city. Just wondering how they, how they come up with such a thing.
Couldn't speak to the rationale. I can say that a lot of the time when laws like this come through, there is a tendency to say, well, you're falling back on regulations that would be imposed by the county health department or by your local code enforcement department that can regulate their hours of operation as long as it's quote unquote, "objective." Again, not speaking to the rationale being used, but I can say, again, just anecdotally, that I don't think there is a great preponderance of these temporary vendors that have made their way through citrus heights as of yet. I think this is a law that was passed more so for more dense urban centers, the San Francisco's, Los Angeles, Orange County, that have a greater number of these vendors that possibly in the past had faced a greater uphill battle to obtain a business license, to be able to operate in certain locations, to be able to, be able to be on a crowded, busy San Francisco street as people are leaving a venue and trying to get their business started. I think with every great law or great intention that comes with a new law, there's obviously a lot of unforeseen things that might end up as a result of that. And unfortunately, the state doesn't pass laws that only apply to certain metro areas, so we have to deal with it as well.
Do any of these fall under the, when you've got private vendors operating in private parking lots like Walmart and the signature gatherers, I mean, they're getting paid, I mean, that's, that's a for-profit scenario and/or selling whatever they're doing in parking lots of our various businesses, the balloons that you see now and all these things. Do any of these?
Commissioner Rem, excuse me, would you mind pulling your mic to?
Sorry.
There you go, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Do any of these restrictions apply to those or is that just a private property issue?
It is a private property issue. If a mobile vendor is operating on private property with the authorization of the private property owner, then they would be subject to that 180-day calendar limit. They can apply for a minor use permit to extend that out if they so choose. Typically speaking, we are not, we don't regulate very often the people that are standing right in front of a grocery store petitioning something. Tends to fall more into the category of they're more or less inside the premises of the property. Temporary use permits typically come into effect more often when you've got a larger event held in the parking lot of a private property, a farmer's market, seasonal gathering, things of that, yeah, nature.
Gotcha.
Yeah, nature.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further questions? Great questions. I don't believe I need to open the public comment, do I though? Oh, I do. Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's any applicants present, I guess they can approach. No? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And do I need to read the appeal language? Okay, very good. Any determination by the planning commissioner?
We need to make a motion in a second first, please.
We got a motion first, that's right. Thank you very much. Let me see, I'll entertain a motion. Did I hear someone?
I'll second.
Uh, let's go ahead and read the motion, please.
Recommend that the city council find the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section fifteen-zero-six-one-B-three of the SEQA guidelines. Any want separate motions?
Yes, please, um, thank you. I have a first by Commissioner Sheeler and a second by Commissioner Semenko. Um, and would you like an individual call or, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Thank you. And I'll entertain a second motion.
Recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter one-oh-six of the City of Citrus Heights municipal code, zoning code section, as shown in exhibit A.
Thank you. We have a first by Commissioner Sheeler and a second by Commissioner Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Now, I will read the appeal language. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars with the city clerk not later than ten calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item, please.
Regular calendar item six B, election of chair and vice chair.
Okay, I guess that is me. So, and before we do that, I just want to thank, um, everybody who trusted me with this position. It's been a lot of fun. Didn't have a lot of action this year, but it's been exciting to be here with everyone. And I wanna thank, um, Andrew and Commissioner, um, Tom Sheeler down on the end down there for, uh, coming along. And I'd like to welcome the new commissioners as well. So, welcome to the dais and to the chamber. It's gonna be a great year. Sounds like we have a lot of fun stuff coming up. And, um, so, I will, at this point, uh, entertain a motion to, I believe, nominate a new chair.
I would like to make a motion to, for Andrew Van Dugger to be chairman.
I second that. If I may, I believe I can. All right, so we have a first, um, to nominate Commissioner Van Dugger as chair and a second by myself, and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So, congratulations, Mr. Van Dugger.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. I will do my best to lead in the next year with, uh, with wisdom and, uh, leadership. Thank you.
Great. All right, and I believe we have to appoint a vice chair as well. So, I will entertain a motion for that.
I, uh, move that we nominate Natalie Price to be the vice chair.
I'll second.
Great, so we have a nomination for Commissioner Price as vice chair and a second by Commissioner Sheeler, and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Wonderful, motion carries. We have a new vice chair. Congratulations, Commissioner Price.
Thank you very much, and thank you Chair Van Dugger for the nomination. I appreciate you.
Wonderful, great. Next item, please.
General correspondence, presentations, and reports from city staff. And that is going to be Planning Commission Academy.
Um, I know all our new commissioners are signed up to go attend the Planning Commission Comma- Academy. Um, looking forward to hearing how that goes. Um, enjoy yourselves, mingle with other, um, commissioners. Probably some of our longer-standing commissioners can tell you some tips and tricks, but, um, I think I talked to all of you guys about, um, making sure you take a picture of your receipt and all those practical things. But most importantly, you know, mingle with folks and see, see what other cities are doing and, and bring back some good lessons.
Thank you, Casey. And I know from, uh, experience, it is a lot of fun. Um, and there's a lot to be, to be gleaned, and it's just great to connect with the fellow commissioners, and you come back feeling like you know each other a little bit better. So, I think I'll be there, too. I think some of us, uh, are going as well. Are you attending this year?
I, I definitely think about it, yes.
Yeah, I think so. If we're invited, were we invited, Casey? I'm not sure.
We will, uh, double-check on the budget.
Okay. The old, the old ones might have to remain behind. Okay, I get it. No problem. Um, and do we have another item tonight, or is that it?
No additional items.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you for the wonderful presentations from both of you. And thank you for, um, yet another successful meeting, and we'll look forward to a great year. And this meeting is officially adjourned at seven fifty-six P.M.